25-18 for furnishing new refuse vehicles for the City Cheyenne Sanitation Division, solid waste management plan.
Discussion by the public, we'll start with Vicki.
Vicki Nemec, Public Works. This bid is to purchase equipment for our sanitation division following RR recommendations. We are recommending three, purchasing three automated side-loading refuse trucks, single arm, from Peterbilt with a LaBree body. The low bidder, which was Peterbilt with the Bridgeport body and others, including Peterbilt with the Shoe Pack body, which was discussed at Finance last Monday, did not meet the minimum specifications. We're recommending purchasing four automated side-loading refuse trucks, which are dual arms, from Peterbilt with the LaBree body. The low bidder, which was Peterbilt with the Shoe Pack body and others, did not meet the minimum specifications. We are recommending of one 30-yard rolloff truck be purchased from Peterbilt with the Shell body. The low bidder did not sign their bid and others did not meet the minimum specifications. We are recommending two rear-load packers be purchased from Floyd's Truck Center with freight liner trucks. We're recommending the low bidder, all bidders met the minimum specifications. We're recommending one 40-yard front-load refuse truck be purchased from Peterbilt with the New Way body. That is the low bid. We are recommending all bidders met minimum specifications. And finally, the one semi truck, we are recommending purchasing from Peterbilt, who was the low bid. We are recommending the low bid, all bidders met minimum specifications. In all instances, we are recommending awarding the bid to the vendor who met the minimum specifications at the lowest cost. We held a mandatory pre-bid. We gave every bidder the opportunity to ask for adjustments to the specifications. We made it clear that we intended to accept equipment that meets our minimum specifications. Prior to the bid opening, we accepted requests for adjustments to the specifications. Some adjustments we were able to accept, others we were not able to accept due to our experience in both operating and maintaining this equipment. To lower the standard, the minimum standard, on some items would, we know through experience, put us in the unacceptable situation of having these trucks off the road for repairs too much. Our specifications change each year because technology and vehicles change each year. Purchasing large equipment is really no different than purchasing a car. Every year, models add items, delete items, change body styles, and make other changes. If you take your seven-year-old car and to trade it on a new one, you simply can't get that same vehicle. It doesn't exist because they don't make that model anymore, or the style or the technology has changed. That's why we give vendors an opportunity to tell us what we need to adjust because large equipment changes too. We provide a fair process for all vendors, which gives them an opportunity to compete to sell their equipment to us. However, this is a bid process. We tell them what our minimum needs are, and they are required to give us their lowest price on a piece of equipment that meets our minimum needs. There is no one in this city that wants to save money for our residents and customers more than I do, but lowering our minimum specifications puts our ability to provide the services our customers expect and pay for at risk. Our recommendation is to award this bid to the vendors who proposed equipment that meet our minimum specifications at the lowest cost. These vendors are Peterbilt of Wyoming in the amount of $2,811,000, oh, $2,811,674, and Floyd's Truck Center in the amount of $338,160, for a total bid amount of $3,149,834. Ms. Vasquez, purchasing manager, is available to discuss, is here and available to discuss the bid process. Mr. Bryan Bell, our fleet maintenance manager, is here and available to discuss maintenance. Mr. Pino, the transfer station manager, is here and available to discuss operations. And Mr. Dennis Bell, our sanitation mechanic foreman, is available to discuss maintenance as well. I'm asking you to trust that we understand the minimum needs for our equipment, starting with our operators and mechanics who develop the minimum specifications, up through our leaders like Dennis Pino, who's been with the city for 40 years and in charge of the transfer station and sanitation for more than 20 years. We have 70 years of experience in mechanics sitting right over here. We simply need to do our jobs with reliable, dependable equipment to serve our customers in a timely, efficient manner. And always, our priority is to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. I ask you to please pass these recommendations, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Nemec by council before we go back out to the public?
Just a comment. Actually, I wanted to tell you thank you for all your work you did. I know Finance probably took a little longer than expected last week on this topic, but the way that you guys all came to the actual meeting, I appreciated that staff was on hand to actually walk us through as far as what the vehicles do, what they're actually going to be used for. That was actually nice to see them in the crowd, and the fact that you guys talked about the no exceptions at the beginning with your pre-bid, and you know, everything that went through, that you extended the time so that people could call your office, you know, to get directed to the individuals, to speak to them on, you know, if a specific make or model, you know, may do the same thing that they could review and get back through there before the bids were actually accepted. So I want to actually compliment you and your team on what you presented last week.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, other discussion by the public.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Jeff Kettleson with Elliott Equipment. I'm the one who did the presentation on all the minor exceptions that we had on the side-load equipment, so I just was here for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Standby for council questions and comments, but all right now.
Okay, thank you. Are there other public comment? Are there, are there any other, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation from the Finance Committee is to accept the bid from Peterbilt of Wyoming of Cheyenne in an amount not to exceed $2,811,674, and the bid from Floyd's Truck Center of Cheyenne in an amount not to exceed $338,160, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Cook. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I just want to make absolutely certain that we're doing the most economically responsible thing here and getting the equipment that the sanitation department needs. There's potentially $379,000 in savings here if we can flush out some questions, so I'm not positive who within the sanitation department or Ms. Nemec would be able to answer these questions, but I could be wrong here, but the exceptions that were made by Elliott appear to me to be relatively minor, and I'd just like to walk through those with whomever.
Ms. Nemec.
Mayor, through you, if I may ask, Mr. Bell.
Please.
Mr. Bryan Bell, the fleet maintenance manager, to answer those questions.
Mr. Bell.
Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Bell, thank you. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but so on the single-arm side-load bid from Elliott, and I guess, help me understand why these particular things are $379,000 worth of important. Number four in the packer section, Elliott is using tubing with a little different dimension.
Smaller dimension, yes.
And why would that smaller dimension cause a functionality issue?
We could have the possible, we have wear items, we're at three, I believe our spec called for three by, I don't know if I have that spec in front of me. Our spec called for three by three and a half, I believe, on the rail. I don't have it right in front of me, but going smaller, we're going to have the chance of wearing out faster, being in the shop more.
And what would the cost to replace those guides be?
The rollers themselves, I did check on the rollers, just for the rollers on the current Labrees. We do all four rollers, it's $1,065 between parts and labor.
So you think we'd?
So if you, we have not had to put any guides in the current trucks we are doing now with the current dimensions we are using now.
So, Madam Mayor, through you, do you anticipate that we would have to replace those 379 times over the life of the truck?
I could not tell you. We have not, I personally have not seen this truck, other than by what we've gotten on paper.
Okay, and I actually saw a picture, and it looks identical to the other one. I'd be happy to share it with you, but.
Well, I've seen it on pictures and stuff, but I mean, actually, as a demo, as it, if it came to Cheyenne, we have not had one in Cheyenne to where I could look at it yet.
Okay, and then number five in packer section says that Elliott's was 1/8 inch thinner shoe, but using AR-50 steel with a normal lifespan of about three years. Why would that, I mean, would that be? Kind of, help me understand, is that a major functionality issue there?
The packer shoes we currently use now are 3/8 inch thick. That's what we've been using. We have had to replace them, and we felt going down to a quarter, dropping it down to a quarter could cost us more downtime.
Okay, manufacturer's saying that their, a normal lifespan on those is about three years, and the replacement cost is about $138. And so again, I mean, to get to that $379,000 mark where, how many times would we have to replace those over the lifetime of the truck? Think a lot. So, number 12 in the packer section, there's a 38-inch cylinder, not a 40, which was asked for in the bid. The bodies are the same in both bids, just adding arms. Would that be a functionality disqualifier?
Now, I believe, he did not take exception to that in the single arm.
Okay.
Or I mean, in the dual arm.
But I'm talking the single arm, sorry.
Yep, but it's the same spec for the single and dual, and in his dual-arm spec, he did not take exception to the, to the cylinders' strokes. So I don't know if we, did we change that one, Sarah, in the dual versus the single?
What number was it?
12 and 15. Because we did a lot of changes to try to get everybody to. Come on, page 11. Did we allow it?
So.
Nope. Same thing, okay. Had he come forth before the bid process, we probably would have allowed that.
Okay, and then finally, on the single-arm, number 15 in the packer section, our ram stroke is 50 and not 52. Says it did not say min or max, and was also moved, removed from the dual-arm bid, so is that?
And he had ample time, he pointed it out before we opened the, sent bids in, we probably could have made an adjustment there.
Moving on to the, okay, so the savings on that alone, and we don't know, we obviously can't predict maintenance, but the initial outlay would be $120,000, $120,033 minus any anticipated maintenance. I think you probably have maintenance on any of them. Madam Mayor, through you, you're going to move on to the dual-arm side-load bid. Number four in packer section, it says their dimension guide is made from tubing instead of kind of that C-chell.
It's the, yeah, he took the exceptions on, they're the same on both, both bids.
Yeah, okay, so is that a disqualifier in terms of functionality?
That's what we did, yes.
Why would that be?
Didn't meet our minimum spec of the three. We asked for three and a half, I have it in front of me, by two and 3/16ths.
And what is the purpose of picking the spec you picked?
That's what we have run and had had no problems with it.
Madam Mayor.
And the downtime.
Are there, Madam Mayor, through you, have you, have you had problems with, you say you haven't had problems with what you're utilizing, have you had problems with this other one?
We haven't, we don't have one.
You just don't have experience with it?
No.
So then why, you know, that's a pretty very narrow spec, and I don't imagine that many manufacturers would be able to meet a specific spec like that.
That's why we had our mandatory pre-bid, and we tried to clear it all up in the pre-bid.
Okay. Madam Mayor, number five in packer section, again, AR-450 wear plate, which is quarter inch, you know, is that a disqualifier?
Yes, because it does not meet the spec.
And the spec was chosen by?
We all put it together, had the pre-bid, made the adjustments to where we thought everyone could bid, and they had a month, I believe, between the pre-bid and the bid opening, Sarah, correct?
About three weeks, yeah.
Three weeks. They could have came forth and asked for further changes.
Madam Mayor, through you, I understand that everybody had that opportunity to get through that. I'm trying to save the city 380 grand here, and, and I just.
Well, if you're going to look at that one, then you're going to have to look at the Bridgeport.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bell.
Councilman White.
Case.
In the past.
Case.
Case, I'm sorry.
That's good.
He's been introduced.
LaBree is the only company that provided a dual-arm drop-frame truck.
Okay.
Up until this bid, we were not even aware of this truck.
Until the bid.
Until the pre-bid.
Which truck, the one that?
Shoe Pack.
Okay.
Now, it's my understanding that there was a truck brought here and demoed. I never saw it.
And I never saw it.
And Bryant never saw it. We never saw any literature on it, so that is why the spec is basically what we went with.
Okay, so, and well, finally, as we just move along to the exceptions on the roll-off bid, Madam Mayor, through you, this one is kind of interesting, you know, only a savings of $9,349, but, so we're going there, it says, that Elliott took exception because we use a diverter now for even flow to the cylinders, filling them at the same time, making a smoother operation. The high bidder with no exceptions bid the exact same unit, and I'll give you all an opportunity to kind of respond to this, but didn't bid correctly, and now has to order special cylinders to meet spec, and they, perhaps hard to find, the factory will not just have these kind of things on the shelf, so I don't know. If you can talk me through that spec, or did they, did the Peterbilt meet that spec?
On the TARP system, we went through, they provided the wrong literature to Sarah on the, on the TARP system. We brought it up, they said they could provide the aux, I believe it was called, correct, Sarah? And they could provide everything in our spec that we wanted, 100 percent, and we had an email from James Balzer, Peterbilt of Wyoming, to confirm that.
Not, not any questions right now. See if any of my other colleagues have questions prior to making some comments.
Okay, questions by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Just a quick question for Jeff, if I could. Mr. Kettleson, through you, Madam Mayor. You did attend the pre-bid meeting, right?
Yes, I did.
And did you point out these exceptions at the pre-bid meeting?
We started at nine in the morning and went till one, and no, I didn't catch everything. We had, they did a great job. They, there was five amendments to the bid and went through, it took me all the way up to three days before the bid to get mine completed with everything that was changing and coming back and forth.
Did you contact the bid committee with your?
With those two items? No, I didn't.
Different items? Okay, thank you.
Other questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
Thank you, Mr. Kettleson. I apologize, I was looking at my notes, hadn't got to, you know, I appreciate all the info, I appreciate the research that, you know, that Public Works did, I appreciate the research that, that Sanitation Department did, I appreciate kind of your comments, but, I mean, let's face it, $379,000 is a lot of money, guys. And I'm not quite sure what to do with this. I'm not convinced that the specs that were, that were written are solid enough to justify spending an extra $379,000 because that's just what we're used to. I don't know, can you?
Do you mind if I clarify on this? Just basically, if we're looking at straight numbers on this parameter, if we deny this bid and these trucks aren't purchased, how much actual money, because we're not supplying the services to the community, because what happened with the snowplow is now we pushed that project back a year, and so now with the streets that are supposed to be cleared because they don't have an additional truck on there, so even though we're looking at monetary values according to the sheets on the specs regarding cylinders and, and you know, all the hydraulics and everything else that we went over on this, I guess, do you, does Public Works have a figure of literally, if this purchase doesn't go through, how much in dollar amounts does this actually cost the city for the services we're not able to provide?
Vicki Nemec, Public Works, through you, Mayor, and Mr. Johnson. That's a difficult number to establish since we don't know how many more times the vehicles that we need to replace are going to last, or how much more they'll break down, or anything like that. We do the best we can to, to replace our vehicles in a timely manner so that we can provide the services that the customers expect.
And that basically did answer my question, that you can't really put a solid figure exactly how much it's going to cost in public services to equate to an actual value of the truck when it's actually in service compared to, you know, whether or not specs were met.
Mayor, through you, that's correct. I can't put a number on that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bell.
I try, I maybe didn't make myself clear the first time, but up until this bid, LaBree was the only truck available on the market that had a dual-arm and a drop frame. We were unaware until the pre-bid that any other company was building a dual-arm truck or a single-arm truck with a drop frame. That is why the spec is what it is.
And then we're talking about the dual-arm side-load, is that correct? So, again, Madam Mayor, through you, let's focus on that dual-arm side-load. Number four in the packer section, we use a little different dimension guide. This is Elliott, made from tubing, et cetera.
The reason why we, we tried to, like I told you earlier, we weren't aware of this Shoe Pack truck being, they even built one. We tried to accept the bid that met the specs, which I believe council expected us to do.
Thank you, other questions?
Just some comments, no more questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, further discussion by council. Mr. Case.
Madam Mayor, it's a lot of money, 379 grand, basically for $286 worth of parts every once in a while, well, $1,000, three times four, and then 138 times four. It would take a long time to get to that 379,000, but there are perhaps in those side-arm bids, some other specs that may be necessary, but on the dual-side-arm bid, I'm just not, I'm just not sold that those specs are, are necessary. And, let's see, I guess I would move to amend by accepting the bid for Elliott for the dual arm side-load. I'll have to do some math here. For $249,856 versus whatever is in the dual-arm side-load piece.
Okay, hearing no second? Is there a second? There's no vocal comment. Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies for lack of second. Further discussions? Further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
President Rennie.
I understand what the councilman from Ward III is trying to do, and I, you know, it's laudable that we're trying to save money. I'm not sure I want to, if we have doubts about the trucks we're getting rather than making amendments or substitutes to the, to what bids we accept, it might make more sense, and I know that Mr. Johnson tried to address that, but it might make more sense yet to still reject all bids and start over if that's the case, so that's the reason I didn't second Mr. Case's amendment.
Further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so I've actually talked with, as far as the city employees on the course of actions that we're taking, and then Councilman White and I discussed this after Finance last week about the integrity of our RFPs, and so one of the concepts was that all the people that are putting in bids have done this before, whether they have dealt with the city, the county, the state, they've all done government contract bids. The pre-bid set the ground rules for exactly what it was. They stated in Finance that no exceptions will be allowed, or the bids would be thrown out. They extended the time of review. They, it sounded like there was a way more fluid conduit of information that they could be contacted to address any types of issues, and so when Councilman White and I talked about the RFP process, he said when it came to the state and its integrity of its RFP, you know, somebody make him a million dollars lower, but, you know, because the rules were set up and the ground rules that they weren't going to be accepted, then basically those were thrown out no matter what the price tag was because of the integrity of the RFP. And so when I look at, and we've dealt with this about five or six times now, you know, even more recently that we have with Caterpillar and now with this, that, you know, it just seems like we're establishing a precedent that, you know, I don't really have to meet bid specs, I'm just going to throw my exceptions. bid specs, I, I'm just going to throw my exceptions, and I know that council really aren't automotive mechanics with any kind of expertise to deal with this, they're going to strictly look at the price tags on the deal, so I'm just going to wait till council, it comes before council, and then see if I can get it in here, even though the ground rule is clearly established that these exceptions were not going to be permitted, and from what I gathered at finance, that was explicitly stated, that we were going to do a course of action, and this is something that purchasing and Public Works and other entities that purchase vehicles have tried to take guidance from us to see exactly what we wanted to do. And so they did revamp the process to have more language presented to them on, in, address, you know, if a specific part on one truck, you know, could match the functionality of the other truck, and they said, oh yeah, that can be done, and it was actually cleared, and then, you know, before the bidding process started. So it appears now that we're opening a door to question the integrity of our RFP process, if we're literally going to go and just kill every single thing that is presented before us.
Other comments by council?
Madam Mayor, through you. I really have no, no questions, but, you know, I, I do, I do believe that, you know, I, I certainly think it's, it's reasonable, and I can understand where Councilman Case is coming from, but I also, you know, in this, in this instance, I implicitly trust the expertise of, of the two gentlemen that, that stepped up and spoke to us tonight about the specs, about the development of the specs, and frankly, about the work, the work that's, that's done, you know, on our vehicles, you know, frankly, nobody's going to know it better than, than themselves and their crew, and they have that historical, historical knowledge of, of what we currently have, and, and really what, what the city needs. So, to me, when, when two gentlemen with the expertise that they have step up and give us the input that they did, I put my trust in that, so I'm going to definitely support these bids in front of us tonight.
Other comments by council? Other comments by council? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
No.
The motion passes with Dr. Rennie and Mr. Case's no votes.
Next item is number 22B on page seven, appointment of Patrick Brody to the Community Action of Laramie County Board.
Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. White, discussion by council? Discussion by council. Okay, is this is a mayoral appointment, I do not have a vote in this, so all of those members in favor of this appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Announcement of public hearing to be held Monday, July 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Central Cafe Limited Liability Company, Doing Business as Central Cafe, 3920 Central Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Other business?
Other business by the public. All right, good evening.
I don't walk so good anymore.
Been patient.
My name is Bob Norris, 2508 Cactus Way, just a citizen, just wanted to come down, I've not had the opportunity to do this before, I've spoken here once or twice, but just to thank you guys, appreciate all you do. I have for over 30 years taught a whole bunch of people that you're, to submit to the government authorities, but that's the individuals, that's people, and, you know, just listening tonight and other times I've been here, a lot of different personalities, some of them in the past and the current ones, but just appreciate what you're doing. That's not easy, you know, you get a lot of flack, and I'm sure a lot of that is, is private or by email or phone or something, or just individual comments, but for a lot of us, we really appreciate what you're doing. It's hard to do that with the legislature or county commissioners, I can, but again, just thank you for doing that, and keep up the good work.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, 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 we're speechless now.
I think we stop right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, other discussion by the public. Discussion by council.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
I just want to say thank you to the Economic Joint Powers Board for their decision to actually generate $25,000 in funds to go towards the splash pad, and then also LCCC for their $10,000 commitment, and so by all means, we're about roughly $122,000 short of our $300,000 goal, so by all means, if you know any philanthropists that can take care of us like Casper, we're looking for you.
Okay, other discussion by council? Well, if not, I want to take this opportunity to thank Robert Briggs, for all of your work. This is his, this is his last council meeting, his last day is Friday the 13th, doomsday for us, but thank you so much for all of your service to Cheyenne. I think that you have proven to our community that we have real opportunities and potentials to think forward and to do really great things. You added a spark with certainly our department directors that we really needed, and we are going to miss you, you are not replaceable, but we certainly know that we've got great talent out there, so we'll be, we'll be searching for that, and we wish you and your family all the best as you continue to work in Sheridan, and don't be surprised if you've got flat tires out there in your car, keep trying, but thank you again so much, and please thank your family as well, because I know that while they stayed back in Sheridan, that was, that was tough, so thank you so much, appreciate you. Okay, with no further business, we adjourned.